Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, whether you want it to be or not, it is. Here we are. We have a full complement of county commissioners, Commissioner Jason Snyder, Commissioner Nufisa Fai, Vice Chair Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Jerry Willie, and me, Catherine Harrington, the Chair. So, first item on the agenda today is formal agenda item discussion. Several of us would like to see, well, there aren't more than five, so a few of us would like to see item ten pulled from the consent agenda. I know I had requested days ago that something more be indicated. Otherwise, the way it is, it just seems like poof, all we have to do is say, go bond one hundred and fifty million and...
So, Chair, feedback that I heard from the board staff are ready to provide information today in leadership, or you can pull that to...
Leadership isn't till...
I'm sorry for agenda check-in. I used the wrong, wrong word. So, staff can address any questions you have, or if you would want a formal presentation, staff can do that at the board meeting as well.
I know that I'm asking for a formal presentation. I'd like something to be said, but...
I asked that it be explained that there is more to bonding than just saying, "We want to bond and go do it," and ask for an articulation of the different phases of what has to be done. So...
Staff are ready to explain that right now.
I think we should just do it on camera.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do it in the boardroom.
I concur, and I think that it's good for the public and our, our partners to see that in, in that setting. So, that's why I support that.
Yep.
The A-Team is ready. I can tell. They're looking over there. Look at them. They're ready.
So, in terms of that, do you want it, since we don't have any action items, where would you like to do it on the agenda?
Oh, that's a good question.
Since we have speakers, outside speakers for the presentations.
Right after that, but before the public hearings?
How about that?
The board could add an actions section before, between presentations and public hearings.
Terrific.
And move that item to action.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's on it.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Thank you. Were there any other questions on the formal agenda for today? Alrighty then. It looks like we have a letter to consider. Okay. It has something to do with J-PAC and something to do with RFFA. Notakers? Okay. I'm not on J-PAC, so I'm not the one that has to get it done.
Good morning. Got ourselves hemmed in back there. Full room today. So, Chair, thank you for the opportunity here. We just wanted to seek your board's input on a letter here, and this is related to potential funding allocations for Metro's twenty-eight through thirty regional flexible fund allocation. Steps on a point-one bonding. And so, really, the key element of the letter here is really seeking board input on whether you'd like to continue, as a board, pressing for a full funding request for the TV Highway Transit Project. The initial...
Thirty versus twenty-eight.
Exactly. The initial request was for thirty million dollars. The proposal that's being considered at this time would fund the project for twenty-eight million dollars. ODOT has made at least a verbal commitment that they have a project that would help to backfill two million dollars worth of project costs, some work that they're planning to do out in the Cornelius area as a part of their upcoming step or the State Transportation Improvement Program. So, that seems like a comforting assurance, but it also isn't exactly the full funding that we had requested for the project. So, I think that's really our recommendation, and we're seeking board feedback on the letter to just continue to press for the full thirty million dollar regional flexible funding commitment.
And just to add, the J-PAC is considering public testimony at their meeting this Thursday, and so, we would be sending this in to get sent out to the J-PAC members for consideration. And I think the public comment period ends on April twenty-eighth.
Anything more?
But I guess I just want to understand that. I mean, I read the letter and obviously have the context from prior discussions in the last few months, but I guess I want to make sure that we're also, as a commission and as a county, not acting tone deaf with the need to partner, and twenty-eight million is pretty close to thirty, and ODOT's making, I know it's not a written commitment, but a verbal indication that they would help fill the gap. So, to me, the context here is a little bit about being a good regional partner, too. And if they're getting us what we need to get the project done, then like...
So, the question...
Jabbing them in the ribs is like...
So, the question should really go to our liaison.
Though the letter...
What is your reason of the politics?
I think everybody, from what I read in the room, Chair Harrington, thank you for asking that question, is that everybody is really intending to be a region, sort of a regional partner, and try to divvy up to sort of give everyone a piece of the pie and to share this eighty-four million opportunity to bond. But from what I got from our staff is, how do we put it in writing to say, "This project needs thirty million"? That was the original request. We really knew need to. And maybe this will help ODOT to put in writing that commitment to say, "We will by all means." Because right now is a verbal commitment that says, "Yes, but this is..."
We got that out of...
Yeah, so I think the read of the, the room is, try to be a regional partner to try to meet the demands that exist for all tri-counties. But at the end of the day, this project does need thirty million, and so, it's a bit of a competing priority.
Does the two million dollar delta help get something else done that's meaningful to some other? I mean, is that why the decision's being made? Is the two million, get some other thing done that it wouldn't be, that we wouldn't be able to get done as a region otherwise?
Yeah, well, Clackamas County has been expressing some, some, in a strong language, some of the needs that exist in that county and some of the deficits that they face in their roads. And the two million that's taken away from, well, multiple millions that are sticking away from different projects in the RFFA is giving some money to the Sunrise Corridor.
Well, so, Clackamas County isn't hesitating for everything they want. So, I don't think we should back away from that ourselves. You don't get what you don't ask for, and go from there.
Right. And our sense is with the twenty-eight million dollars and with the ODOT commitment, the project should be okay, but we felt it might be important just to have the board on record as continuing to suggest we should seek that full funding allocation. And similarly, TV Highway and Eighty Second are very similar transit capacity improvement projects. And so, we think those two, in terms of the regional look at projects, are probably the two most important projects. And then, those are also projects that are not really scalable. Many of the other projects may be more scalable.
Did the Jade District or Eighty Second, were they fully funded?
I believe they're also taking a small reduction in the current proposal as well, but we anticipate that others will be advocating for additional funding for their projects as well.
Okay, you've convinced me.
And this goes back to the Get Moving days. I mean, those two were the primary projects that we looked at. Go for the thirty million and be on record.
Yeah, we're making a statement.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Great. Onward ho, then we go to deflection.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Erin Calvert, one of the Assistant County Administrators, and pleased to join Deflection Program Coordinator Danielle Farr this morning for a presentation on the deflection program. As you all know, the Washington County Deflection Program is led by Danielle and housed in our Health and Human Services Department, but it truly demonstrates a one-Washington County philosophy and practice of working together with partners from several departments, which of course includes our Sheriff's Office, DA's Office, Government Relations, and others. And of course, we at the county don't do any of our work alone, and so Danielle also coordinates with the courts and several agencies and community partners to get this work done. That's also the reason that Assistant County Administrator Marnie Kyle and I often trade off being at the table with Danielle, and this morning is my turn. So, I know there are several members of the team online and in the audience today that also are here to support the deflection program and be your subject matter experts in case there's any questions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle.
Just because this is such a new program, Danielle, introduce yourself, but also could you introduce the other team members who are either in the room or on Zoom so we can give them some visibility for the amazing work that's been happening since this launched in September?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I would love to. So, I'm Danielle Farr. I'm the program, Senior Program Coordinator for our deflection program. Here with us today, we have DDA Will Stabler from the DA's Office. He's been here a few times before with me and has been starting with us since the start of our program. We also newly have Trevor Gillis. He's in HHS with us. He's our new program navigator. So, his primary job is to help facilitate relationships with our program partners. So, all the provider network out there that's also experiencing this new program and a whole new set of services. He's interacting with them, but also interfacing with our participants directly to make sure that they have a direct contact with our programs so that they're well-served. We also have just welcomed yesterday...
Oh, cool.
Mira Norris, and she's our program specialist. So, she's going to be in an administrative capacity, but also help us visualize our data a bit better. We're doing new work, but it's also important to understand that new work just as rapidly as we're doing it, and it's going to give us the opportunity to iterate more quickly, but also more effectively. So, we're not doing it on feelings, but instead on real data and real understanding of our, those that we're serving. We have Naomi Hunsaker. She's the Addiction Program Manager. She supervises the three of us. And online, we have Pablo. No, I don't know Pablo's last name.
No, it was Philenzuela.
No, it was Philenzuela, but he's with our GR team, and he's going to speak to the GR concerns that are top of mind. So, he'll be joining us online for that slide.
Great.
Thank you for that opportunity. I really appreciate it. So, our deflection program, as you mentioned, is brand-new. We are about seven months in now, but we have a bit to cover today. Some of that is going to be the brand-new best practice report that was published by CJC. We'll have a review of some of our engagement numbers, our current budget, government relations update, partnerships, and some of our opportunities for growth, because as we iterate, we understand some new opportunities, and then just our timeline moving forward. So, this is the, a brief overview of deflection. While I live and breathe it every day, all day, I also know that this is not something that you all do all the time. And each county is unique and distinct and has their own way of doing things. So, what might be in Multnomah County is going to be different from Clackamas, and it's different than ours. So, we elected to pursue a officer intervention model, which begins with a citation. So, rather than arresting those folks or getting them into the criminal justice system, they have the opportunity to participate in treatment with a myriad of supports that deflection offers instead. If they're not eligible for deflection specifically, and that, that's currently a decent sum of folks, they still have the opportunity through the Organ Drug Intervention Plan or HB four thousand and two to be in conditional discharge. So, it's not the only avenue for treatment and for expunge, expungement. But instead, deflection is just this funded piece by the CJC. So, this is, and I apologize that it's so text-heavy, but there was a lot of important information discovered in this best practice and emergency evidence key findings from the CJC. So, part of the HB four thousand and two mandated that CJC investigate and evaluate what might be best practices for deflection. If everyone's going to do something different, we should know what's working. And they have some early understandings, and I'm really pleased to say that we are right within that bell curve. We've been doing a lot of what they found is best practice for this work. One of those best practices is using warm handoffs in the field, and that means an officer will go to the citation event at that time of citation and greet the person, offer some treatment interventions, and kind of meet them literally where they're at in that moment. And they get the opportunity to serve them there and educate them about deflection at that time. So, we're currently do that with partnership through four D, but we also recently were able to execute our contract to have our own internal warm handoff peer. And that gives us a little more opportunity to either target areas or invest in maybe some underserved areas and track the data internally, which has been a bit lost for us. The other emergent evidence shows that in absence of warm handoffs, we're reaching out quickly. We've been doing that since inception, sometimes four, five, six handoff, or six outreach interventions within a week to try and connect with that person before they have any sort of court interaction. The goal is to serve folks as swiftly and effectively as possible. More emerging evidence suggests that conducting assessments in the field is the right place to do that, and we have also been doing that since inception, sometimes at Starbucks. I think Burgerville has been a popular location. They do have the seasonal shakes. So, our, our participants really have enjoyed that. We'll come to you. We'll help support you. Let's figure out what you need to do. And that's been a benefit with our, with our peer support. They also note that quality of life indicators and program engagement is important to track that across the whole deflection intervention, and we have been tracking that partly due to mandate. They were building this evidence-based practice report, so we needed to be checking in on that. But we've also found that that gives us some really great insights into how people are progressing across their, their whole program timeline. And I have a slide on some of our findings here in a little bit. Some of the areas that I think we, we could continue to look at, and we plan to, are the broadening eligibility beyond standalone misdemeanor possession. So, initially, we started with our PCSU, which was just that smallest amount. On the first of the year, we expanded that to also include the PCSAs. And then, we do have our DA looking at what it would look like to have some of those smaller charges, like the criminal trespass and...
Disorderly conduct.
Disorderly conduct, because they, they tend to be what maybe starts that interaction with law enforcement. And so, we want to see what that would look like to wrap that in.
What do you call that? You said an A or a U, so is that an A?
Those charges, and I'm not from the DA's office, so I don't always know the, the specifics of legal, but those, the PCSU and the PCSA, those distinctions, those markers, were expressly created when we recriminalized those, just those drug enforcement charges. So, I don't believe, and maybe Will would know more, but I don't believe there are U or A identifiers with those other disorderly conduct charges. And then, operating multiple pathways to deflection and extend reach. And we're in active talks of at least four different potential pathways to see what would fit most with our community needs, but also our current structure of our programs, that we're not creating too much of a parallel program, but still offering services to as many people as possible. So, this is our program numbers as of April seventh. We've had seventy-six total people eligible. You'll note that there are twenty-eight folks that did not respond to our outreach efforts. They were either lost to not having a phone or their own challenges that they're having currently, and they didn't appear to the courthouse for their citation. So, we weren't, we weren't given the opportunity to serve them or deflect them there either. This remains one of our biggest challenges, and it's not unique to Washington County. This is a statewide. Our percentages are right in line with what we're seeing throughout the state. But that, that knowledge doesn't decrease our need to want to connect with these folks. I do want to note that our completion numbers, I think last time we spoke, we're at zero still, but we are now at eleven as of this slide, but twelve in reality, because since then, we had another successful completion.
Ask some questions.
Yes.
So, the twenty-eighth failure to appear, they just kind of disappeared. Is there a warrant then out for them?
There is.
Okay. Which would then again, at that point, exempt them from coming into the, the deflection program?
We, we anticipated that concern, so our DA was willing to partner with us in allowing us to waive the FTA if they do connect with us within seven days. So, we have a grace period. Even if there's an FTA, we want to incentivize. I mean, sometimes our peers connect with folks out in the community. It is not uncommon for our folks to not necessarily have a schedule that they're adhering to or a calendar notification to remind them of their court date. And because of that, we know things, challenges arise and things can happen. We give them a full seven-day grace period currently to try and encourage that engagement.
And so, what's another exit?
The other exits are folks that have either had additional charges while they're in deflection. It's an unsuccessful exit. I think some of the initial language said failure.
Other exit, sounds better than failure, doesn't it?
Well, and, and for a lot of these folks, it hasn't been a failure. They've maybe secured housing. They've maybe been in treatment, but they did have something that unfortunately precluded them from criminal justice involvement because of whatever this other thing is.
They got discharged from the program.
Yes.
Without completing it.
Yes. So, it's not a successful completion, but I wouldn't say it's a failure. For a lot of these folks, they've, they've been introduced to treatment. They've accomplished some, many of their goals. Yeah. And we're, we're even finding that, that precursor in deflection, if they then move into conditional discharge, which is more formal, more more criminal justice involvement, they're, they're set up well because they've had that peer connection. They've had that support early on. Thank you for those questions. So, I mentioned that we're doing some of those community-based assessments. Here's what we're learning about who we're serving and, and what our work impact is looking like. We took a bit of a word cloud from some of the quotes, the direct quotes from our participants to just get a feel for what deflection feels like to them and how they describe it. More objectively, it is notable that forty-five percent of the folks that we're connecting with in deflection are unsheltered when they start. And I think that speaks to some of that disorganization or some of those barriers that they might be encountering. Fifty percent of those in deflection went from unsheltered to sheltered since their deflection, and not all of those are successful completions. But again, there's, there's some success in there. Another fact that I felt was really meaningful for what we want to encourage in deflection is that one in four of the people that we're doing intakes on have never been in any kind of treatment. And Washington County has a robust and accessible treatment network, but for whatever reason, these folks have never engaged in that service. And I think that speaks to the specific tool that deflection is. It's not for everybody, but for those folks who just needed some reason to make today the day to try, it has been effective. Forty-nine percent of the people in deflection have completed their ACM, which is the assessment for substance use disorder.
Danielle, can I have a question?
Absolutely, please.
I, I really like this slide because they're hard numbers. Forty-five percent are unsheltered is not a good number, but then you have the fifty percent of the participant going from unsheltered to sheltered. So, that is both bad news and a great news all at once, two bullet points. The question I have is just for clarification on the forty-five percent and how you're calculating that number. The previous slide, if you could just go back one more time, just articulate the numbers here. You have four hundred and forty-two, no, four hundred and fifty-two total referrals, and then you have three hundred and thirty-eight, seventy-five percent that are not eligible for the program. So, the forty-five percent on the next slide, are you using the seventy-six eligible participants? Or are you using which numbers?
Thank you, Commissioner Fai. That's a good question. So, we're only able to get this information on the people who have entered deflection. So, that's actually forty-eight people in total.
Eight people, forty-five percent of that.
Correct.
And so, now going back to the previous slide, then how do we collect or can we collect information about how many of the eligible people are unsheltered? Or even go in step further and saying, of all the people who got citations for for deflection, how many of those are unsheltered homeless people? And when we say unsheltered, we're talking about people who are homeless, who are probably getting caught using drugs in the streets. So, how do we, is there any way in the best practice report that really sets up where we can collect that data?
I don't recall anything in the best practice report for that specific data target, especially in checking on that. However, part of why we have elected to have Mira here, she comes from a, a very strong public health background. This is her, this is her forte and her heart for serving these folks. Even the folks that we're not able to get into our program is going to help inform our work. Additionally, we've, oh, yes.
The example she, that Commissioner Fai was giving was when we cite someone and there is a citation, are we recording if they're homeless or not? Thank you, Chair. And I don't know that we do. We have a DA can...
Have to come from the bond enforcement agencies and whatever.
Okay. So, if you could just take that as a question for follow-up. Yeah. So, we're going to have to end generally at ten of the hour. Otherwise, we delay the next meeting. So, just taking note of where you are in your presentation. Thank you for joining.
I would at least like an opportunity at the end for one or two. Hold time for that. I would appreciate it.
So, what we're also finding, based on the demographics of, of those in our program, so the forty-eight again, we were able to do some preliminary evaluation of our demographics and who we're serving. Um, we were able to do some preliminary evaluation of our demographics and who we're serving. Um, again, this is a very small number of folks, but I, I am heartened. Um, that it, it somewhat does represent our community, the community that we're intending to serve. Um, and our community broadly. So our budget at, was roughly one point five million. Right now, we are expecting to be about underspent by about ten to twenty percent. We're finding a lot of the counties are in the same predicament, building a. Cross-departmental program is challenging and fraught with difficulties. Um, we have done it and we are, we are working towards expanding even more. Um, and we're working on some current spend-down initiatives to make sure that in this lean. Time that we're coming into, um, we're not leaving anything on the table. So that's our, our current goal right now. Some of those spend-down initiatives include expanding our, our outreach and our reach. Um, there shouldn't be a lot of um, long-term build-out in those, but we're exploring those currently. One of the key findings that the events, the base, sorry, the best practice report found. Uh, was that uncertainty of funding creates challenges for jurisdictions and planning their programs. Especially as it relates to community buy-in, hiring and service development. Um, and that was one of four of their primary findings. And I think that speaks to some of the challenges that we've seen thus far. Um, and in our future state, I wanted to.
For a second on this one.
Absolutely.
Invoicing support. So we've heard about with the SHS program, how uh, paying invoices was. Uh, too slow of a process. So is that what invoicing support is about here as well?
Great question, Chair Harrington. Uh, thankfully, no. Um, this invoicing support is primarily with our contracted providers, um, making sure to invoice us for all of these brand-new contracts. So I'm providing them one-on-one support to make sure all of these new processes that they've developed, um, that they're invoicing us.
Terrific. Great. Thank you.
And just one more thing. So this is a twenty-four, twenty-five initial budget. You're anticipating. That level of revenue will continue in twenty-five, twenty-six. What do we get? What do we come back with?
I, I wish I had a ton of information on that. Unfortunately, we don't. We still have a lot of legislative activity that's going on right now that determines that, and there's a lot that's very ambiguous. But Pablo should be online and is logging in right now to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I just was not wanting this to fill the program on one point five and then we have an SHS situation again and we're never down to three. We have two cuts.
As, as a reminder for the board, uh, this program was stood up with state um grant funding. This is fully dependent on state funding. There is no general fund um support. So if state funding goes away. Or if it is reduced, the program actually is reduced. There is no um, um, no other funds available.
Yeah, I think that was my.
That's our concern.
Doing this year to year on our program.
We're reliant on the state.
Those, our government relations team has been tracking this. They've been giving us the most recent. Uh, weekly update we, we got gave us the crispest pic- crispest picture ever of the CJC funding. So Pablo, we'll turn it over to you now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Pablo Nieves Valenzuela. I'm a member of the government relations team and this will be my first and only slide during this presentation, so I'm gonna do my best to put on a good show for y'all. Um, first, I want to focus on the two main policy bills that we've been working on related to deflection. The first is SB two thirty-six. So on this bill, it includes a package of policy changes related to deflection and recriminalization efforts. Um, the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Addiction and Community Safety Response authorized us to develop an amendment. That requires the CJC to develop a new funding formula for distributing funds from the uh behavioral health. Uh, deflection grant program to counties. Um, and we believe that this grant should have a formula specific to the needs of county deflection programs. And that the CJC is the, the right entity to be responsible for that work. Uh, they're already in charge of sending the funds out to counties, but they do not have the ability to craft their own formula for it. And instead, we are uh relying on the already problematic formula from the um Oversight and Accountability Council. So this bill already had a public hearing and it should be scheduled for a work session soon. Um, while also um highlights uh HB three five seven six. That's a standalone policy bill that also requires the CJC to develop a funding formula for county deflection programs. It was introduced by Representative Dobson at Clackamas County's request. And beyond creating a new formula, the language um in the introduced version of the bill. Also requires the CJC to include certain variables in their formula. Uh, while most of those variables aren't necessarily problematic, we uh would prefer for the CJC to identify. Which variables to use through more of an open and collaborative process rather than um using a prescribed list. And so we provided that feedback to our partners at Clackamas County and they agreed um to request an amendment. Uh, making those variables permissive rather than a requirement. So um, the CJC may include them in the formula. Um, we provided supportive testimony with the caveat, uh, of course, that we would only support with that amendment. Um, and then before I wrap up, I also want to mention the primary budget bill for the CJC. That's HB five zero zero five. Um, and it, it currently includes forty million dollars for county deflection programs, but that number is really insufficient to meet the needs. Um, and meet the demand for deflection here and across the state. Um, uh, you know, it, it's effectively a cut from what we received in the short session last year. So. Uh, we've been supporting the Association of Oregon Counties as they collaborate with Senator Lieber. Um, to identify a funding level that will meet our needs. And we provided testimony a couple of weeks ago during a hearing for HB five zero zero five to elevate that concern. And we were joined by many stakeholders in that effort as well. So. Um, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to Danielle unless there's any questions, but um, yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Pablo. I appreciate it. So while we, while we do anticipate that reduction, we're also still heartened that we, we have. Done the building that, that we anticipated doing. Um, we mentioned earlier, a lot of these folks, but our, our staffing is near complete. We still have. A uh senior legal specialist in our DA's office. Um, that we would like to welcome to the team, but we have not been able to find that person as of yet. So looking forward, our opportunities for growth, uh, we continue to partner very closely with our GR team. To try and anticipate the landscape moving forward. It's challenging. To continue to build and continue to work with our partners, not knowing what things will look like on the thirtieth of June. However, I anticipate that will be an ongoing challenge to some degree. Um, fortunately, our, with our GR partners, we're hoping to level the mountains and fill the valleys a bit. Um, there does seem to be some understanding a- across the deflection legislators that suggest they're aware. That this challenge is, is really in, inhibiting a lot of the growth. Um. Additionally, a lot of our concerns come in this form of FTAs with our, our current participants. Um, my, my heart feels like there's a lot of need there, um, which probably. Uh precipitates these FTA moments. So we would like to make sure that that serve, those folks are served. Um, in order to do this, our new Spanish-speaking warm handoff peer, I think will be instrumental in this work. We anticipate the hiring of that person any day now. Um, and are hoping to partner with our Aloha-based sheriff's deputies. So that they can be out in the field, working with these folks and helping to do outreach more frequently and more readily.
On the growth front, I, I just want to reiterate something I stated a couple of months ago. That's of utmost concern to me and that is that this program be equitable and not further previous injustices. In the criminal justice system. I don't directly see this reflected here, but I'm gonna state it again publicly. I think it's extremely important that, that we figure out how to set the program up in a way. That does not take an instance from the past that was treated as a crime. That if it had happened now, they would be eligible for deflection, but they're not because of the prior instance. I think that's um really uh concerning policy from an equity standpoint. And I don't want to be doing something, I don't want our program continuing historical injustices that have treated consistently. Treated certain marginalized groups uh differently in the criminal justice system. So to me, when we're talking about growth. That's my number one priority, just me personally. I, I really think that we're um. Not doing the right work if we don't get that right.
So what you're advocating for is changes in the legislation so that the past. Isn't rendering someone ineligible.
If, if that's in the legislation and not allow.
It is.
They're shaking their heads no, but I like, if it's in the legislation, yes, but I just, we, we can. If that's the case, yes, but I, that would be very disturbing to me if we've literally got state legislation that is. Gonna systematically create more injustice in our criminal justice system.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. I, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding, are you? Are you suggesting that there is? A. Are folks who have had drug crimes in the past, that they would be ineligible for deflection?
If they went, my understanding from every presentation you all have given is if they have. A prior involvement in the criminal justice system, then they're ineligible. My point simply being that if that involvement was simply for something that would be deflection-eligible now, I think it is wildly wrong. And unjust to systematically keep them out of this program.
And, and thank you for that point of clarification. So uh Commissioner Schneider. Past drug offenses are not a barrier for eligibility. It, it's only current pending crimes.
Ah.
That, that would be that, that other crimes. Um, and I.
So once it's adjudicated, it's, then that, that's no longer considered.
And perhaps Will can speak more because he has that legal language in his back pocket, but those past drug crimes. Um, are, are not, in my understanding, being the current barrier for folks being.
So those don't make, they don't make them ineligible for deflection? Yeah, that's correct. So a, a conviction for a drug offense prior to twenty-twenty, when measure one-ten was passed. Um, that would not disqualify somebody from deflection. So a, a drug crime conviction from twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen.
Previously.
Previously, correct, would not disqualify somebody from deflection. Okay, that makes me feel much better. I'll stop asking.
It was prior presentation that we had on this program. Or it could have been in the second half of last year, when we were spending time better understanding the population. Of folks who were ineligible. There were other crimes often related to supporting one's addiction.
Sure.
Property theft, other person-to-person crimes.
Yep.
And I don't know what is being done to untangle some of those.
And I'm a little less, I mean, to me, it's more like something that clearly they'd be eligible for. I just don't want to be perpetuating that historical. Frankly racist uh policy.
So I have a couple of questions um on this growth. The first is you have. Uh, a third of the population has an other exit. What do you know about the other exits?
Um, thank you, Chair Harrington. So the other exits primarily are either a, a loss of all contact. So we, we haven't had any contact despite multiple outreach, despite providing them a cell phone. Um, despite looking for them at the place where they are. Previously residing, and so we've lost all contacts. That's, that's many of them. The other major um or dominant other exit is another crime. Um, and it would be important to note that that other crime, if it's a drug enforcement misdemeanor. Is oftentimes just wrapped into their deflections. They're not exited for another um PCSU or PCSA charge. Um, but rather if it's a UUMV or an assault, um, then they are exited from the program.
So um. I understood, talking about growth, uh, were future opportunities. In constructing the program, uh, we heard great clarity that it's a new program we're building. We're not gonna get ahead of our skis, so we'll only build to what we can afford, given the grant funding. But I've, today was not the first time that I've heard Pablo say, there's a greater need. There's a greater need, there's a greater need. But nowhere in this presentation today have I heard that. There are eligible folks that we're not able to serve. So um, I do see these other opportunities for, you know, further outreach. On the failure to appear, building the warm handoff, increased referral options. And I'm supportive of that. Um. But do we have, are we capturing the population that is out there? Uh, that would qualify for the program? Or is there a need for greater dollars there? Because that isn't coming across to me at all.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I, I, I think it's a, a, a yes and. I, I think there will always be a greater need as we, as we build out. We have use for that. I think expanding our eligibility criteria, but also looking at alternative pathways for deflection. There's a, a pathway called naloxone plus, um, that was identified in the. Uh, April first best practice report that we're currently exploring. There's also a, a pathway of officer active outreach, um, that wouldn't include a citation. That we're exploring as well. In addition to expanding perhaps our eligibility, open that door a little wider. Um, for those um criminal trespass types of charges. So that would give us the opportunity to serve more folks now that we've built that program. And we expect to be able to display that a, a lot more clearly and a lot more readily. Now that we have our program specialist on board that can do some of that work. Um.
So if this topic comes to us again, what I'm hoping that we'll hear more clearly from the state is. Uh, here is what we've learned across the state is working. Here are the areas where we think statewide. We need to be uh increasing our due diligence. Um, otherwise, uh, I'm concerned that uh folks who are skeptical. Or thinking that we're just coddling addicts over and over and over again, um, is, is. Just, there's an end to it. So I think we need to be hearing more state leadership in that. Or I'd like to hear more state leadership in that. I hear you loud and clear that people are people and, and. Folks who are suffering from addiction could benefit from more supports. Um. And I, I appreciate the areas that you've talked about. Um, but I think we, I need to hear more about what is the state really trying to accomplish? Other than this, funding-wise, it feels like we're just sticking fingers in the, in the dyke. And seeing what, what good can come out of it. That's all. I'm not frustrated at all at what the program's doing because I think you've, you've been doing hero's work. Thank you.
Among my last slides, I, I think this is hero's work. So one of the things that we have done intentionally is to try to capture the participant voice. Without using the actual participants um as, as faces of deflection. Still giving them that anonymity that deflection is intended to provide by re- eliminating their charges. So I will leave you with this slide. Um, that gives the direct quotes from the anonymous participants. And how deflection is making a major difference in their life.
I have a question or actually it's a comment and I am, I want to preface my comment by saying. very supportive of this program. I'm pleased at the work that's been put into this. I think as a board and as, uh, part of our leadership here, we need to be aware that we're talking about a one point five million dollar, uh, ticket for what the public and the media may perceive as twelve successes. So I just, I just want to register that. And I think it's incumbent upon us to talk about not just those twelve successes, but the success of the program overall as, as we tell our story here.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll receive. Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, for letting us present today.
Thank you. Great. So we'll pause here and convene in our regular business meeting at ten o'clock. And, um, are we really sure it'll take two hours for our business meeting? So I would suggest that, um, we leave room for reconvening work session to, uh, knock off at least the, the next short item, um, and go from there.
Thumbs up for me.
Okay, great. See ya.